Good evening, everyone. We have a packed house today. And I'm going to, before we get started, we were in a closed session. And before we get to start this meeting, we need to come out of that closed session. So our vice chair, Mr. Brown, will do the honors.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the School Board of the City of Newport News has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such a closed meeting was conducted, in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that Newport News School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies; and two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion, convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
You heard the motion, there's your second?
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call the roll.
Mr. Harris?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Solswall?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Four.
Mr. Gillis?
Four.
Mr. Max?
Four.
Thank you. So at this time, I would like to call to order our regular monthly meeting of the Newport News School Board for Tuesday, May 21st, 2019. On behalf of the members of the School Board and our superintendent, I welcome each of you present and watching. Our quorum is present to transact the business of the school division. We will begin our meeting today, as usual, with the invocation and pledge to the flag. Here to do the honors are two students from Kim Creek Elementary School, Zoe Samuels and Connor Strickland. First, Connor will come up and deliver the invocation, and followed, then Zoe will follow him. So Connor, before you start, come up. Tell us a little bit about yourself before you get started.
I go to Kim Creek Elementary School. I am Connor Strickland, and my favorite subject is math.
All right, yeah. (applause)
The title of my poem is "You Can." If you think you are beaten, you are. If you think you dare not, you don't. If you like to win but you think you can't, and someone says since you won't. If you like to lose, you are lost for out in the world you'll find. Success begins with fellows, fellows will not. It's all in a state of mind. If you think you are a class, you are. If you got to think high, you rise. You've got to be sure of yourself before you can ever win the prize. Life battles don't always go to the stronger, to the stronger or faster man, but sooner or later, the one who wins is the one who thinks he can.
(applause) Connor, that was outstanding. Thank you very much. And next, we'll have Ms. Zoe. Will you please come forward and tell us a little bit about yourself?
My name is Zoe Samuels. I go to Kim Creek Elementary School. My favorite subject is reading and writing. Today, I will be doing the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Zoe, thank you very much. And Mr. Connor, let's give them both a round of applause.[236.81][236.81](applause) Supporting Zoe and Connor tonight are their family and their school family. Could they please stand to be recognized?[251.12][251.12](applause) The Board appreciates you bringing them here to this meeting tonight. Again, they did a fine job. Again, let's give them one more round of applause.[265.66][265.66](applause) Okay. Well, since we got a full house, I think we'll move the agenda. And next, we'll have our Board of Recognitions. I believe that's why so many folks are in the house this evening. Dr. Parker, would you do them here front?
Yes, yes.[282.08][282.08](pause)
Good evening.
Good evening.
On behalf of the School Board and the Superintendent, I'm pleased to present this month's recognitions. Ensuring that young people are financially literate is crucial to prepare them for future financial success. Our first honorees this evening are performing well in this area. Working in support of Education, or WISE, is an educational organization dedicated to building financial literacy, fostering business and social entrepreneurship, and preparing students for college and the global workplace. The organization's literacy certification program provides high school students with financial education and the opportunity to become certified financially literate. Students learn more about personal finance, then they take the WISE standardized financial literacy test, a nationally recognized certification. This evening, we are pleased to share that an Achievable Dream High School was named among the 2019 Best WISE High Schools Teaching Personal Finance.[363.31][363.31](applause) Accepting this recognition on behalf of the Achievable Dream family, our career technical education teacher, Stephanie Sadler, would you please come forward? Assistant Principal Ramona Palmer, and Principal Marilyn Sinclair White.[388.72][388.72](applause) WISE announced its 2019 ranking of the 100 Best WISE High Schools Teaching Personal Finance during a ceremony at the New York Stock Exchange last month. This is the only national ranking that recognizes excellence in personal finance instruction among WISE's national network of schools. The 100 best ranking is determined based on the average certification test score, with special consideration given to the number of student takers and the background of the students. Educators, thank you for equipping our students with the tools they need to become college, career, and citizen-ready. Again, congratulations.[443.12][443.12](applause) I just started this year. I don't think we need to do it.[475.12][475.12](laughter)[476.12][476.12](applause) Also joining these educators this evening is our CTE instructional specialist, Chrissy Hopkins. Thank you.[494.72][494.72](applause) The Virginia School Board Association's Business Honor Roll provides local school districts the opportunity to nominate and recognize up to three local businesses for their support of public schools and its students. With the number of outstanding business partners helping our students in Newport News, it's hard to narrow the list down to just three. So in order to select the 2019 Business Role nominees, we looked at businesses that have distinguished themselves in an extra-special way this year or over the course of several years. The Newport News School Board nominated three local partners to the Business Honor Roll to acknowledge and thank them for their support and service to the school district and the students we serve. Two of our business partners are present this evening. Named to the VSB A Honor Roll are Newport News Shipbuilding and PepsiCo and Riverside Health Systems, which we will acknowledge next month.[554.41][554.41](applause) The employees and management of Newport News Shipbuilding have a long history of supporting our students, teachers, and schools. Their many ongoing programs have helped shape the career and college plans for students across the city. The Long Standing Tattoo Program, Taking Action to Overcome Obstacles, and the more recent GEMS, which stands for Girls with Engineering Minds in Shipbuilding, are but two more of the many initiatives that provide outstanding services to our students. The shipyard even has a department dedicated to career education for students, known as SEEC, Shipbuilders Engaging in Educating Kids. The team members are a constant presence in our classroom. With us tonight to accept the Business Honor Roll plaque on behalf of Newport News Shipbuilding are members, in no particular order, who are instrumental in helping our students: Tom Cosgrove, Chantel Foster, Gary Atterbridge, Khalid Stevenson, and Tommy Craig.[624.41][624.41](applause) also serves on the Heritage Governor STEM Academy Advisory Committee and the Newport News Education Foundation. The shipyard recently awarded a $50,000 grant to a partnership of Newport News Public Schools, the Newport News Education Foundation, and the Peninsula Chamber of Commerce to develop a skills trade program that will enable students to earn industry certifications in welding and complete a workforce leadership course by the time they graduate from high school. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you again.[702.51][702.51](applause) Another important school district partner named to the Business Honor Roll is PepsiCo. Whenever called on to assist with a classroom project or a division-wide event, PepsiCo employees are always willing to help. PepsiCo has joined with Newport News Public Schools to share their time and talent as an engineering design challenge partner in a program where middle and high school students work within a simulated environment to experience what it's like to work at a local STEM company. During the PepsiCo Challenge, 52 students assumed the role of industrial engineers and worked to solve the problem that PepsiCo employees might encounter on the job. Joining us tonight to accept the Business Honor Roll plaque on behalf of PepsiCo are Todd Thomas, Pepsi Newport News Plant Director. And Lauren Bailey, Process Improvement Engineer.[768.23][768.23](applause) PepsiCo is also a longtime dedicated school district partner. Company leaders serve on the Heritage Governor STEM Advisory Board and are always ready to host student tours of their bottling plant, along with providing job-shouting opportunities for graduating seniors. Their employees serve at speakers at middle school career days, and the company donates materials for Spark and throughout the year for classroom STEM activities. Thank you, and again, congratulations for your support of Newport News.[805.12][805.12](applause) The skills of our next honorees were put to the test recently at the State Skills USA Championships. Skills USA is a national organization of high school and college students enrolled in training programs in technical, skilled, and service occupations. Last month, hundreds of students from across the state gathered in Virginia Beach for the State Skills Leadership Conference and Skills Championships. This evening, we're proud to recognize three students in the telecommunications program who earned first place in the OSHA Rules, Regulations, and Procedures Competition. Please join me in congratulating Gerald Bailey, a junior at Warwick High School, Seth Hursey, a junior at Woodside, and Michael McClellan, a junior at Woodside.[891.73][891.73](applause) All three of these young men are in their first year of the TV production program. This team created an Occupational Safety and Health Administration Rules Scrapbook to display their research in video production, in the video production occupational area. They also created a video as one of their projects for the competition, which answered questions about safety rules and precautions with the television production truck. The competition also included an interview by a panel of judges. This team is now advancing to the National Skills USA Competition, which will be held in, where are you headed to? Louisville, Kentucky. Used to be in Missouri. At this time, congratulations.[944.62][944.62](applause) And before you take your picture, I'd like to acknowledge any family members and friends who are here to join you tonight. Do you have any? Okay. I know I saw, there we go. I was gonna say.[960.04][960.04](laughter) I saw your principals. That was Dr. Kelly Mason at Warwick High School, and Dr. Wendy Nichols at Woodside High School, the telecommunications instructor, Mr. Carl Daniels, and the supervisor, Ray Price, the sponsor of Skills USA.[974.43][974.43](applause) Thank you, and congratulations. And bring it back next month. The Governor's Transportation Safety Awards recognize individuals or organizations that have made significant contributions to transportation safety in Virginia. The program is sponsored by the Virginia Board of Transportation Safety. This year, the Heritage High School Chapter of Students Against Destructive Decisions, or SAD, earned a 2019 Governor's Transportation Safety Award in the Community Impact category. This category recognizes organizations for enhancing diversity and inclusion efforts that impact communities and improve highway safety-related behaviors. Please join me in congratulating several members of the Heritage SAD Club: Nehemiah Faith Morris,[1078.23][1078.23](applause) and Darius Price.[1084.23][1084.23](applause) The Heritage SAD Club has been very busy this year. They've hosted and provided numerous programs and projects to promote transportation safety. They've promoted seatbelt usage and shared the effects of drinking and driving, distracted driving, and how marijuana can impact driving. Not that any of them are doing that. Other habits and other habits that can be harmful. Earlier this year, the Heritage SAD Club won a John T. Hannah Award for Traffic Safety in the category of pupil traffic safety, and the committee nominated the organization for the Governor's Award. This team, or members of this team, will be honored at a special ceremony tomorrow. So they've got a little trip ahead of them as well. Joining them this evening is their sponsor, Jamie Plecker. Would you please stand?[1137.13][1137.13](applause) And their principal, their proud principal of the 5,800 family, Shamika Gerald.[1148.65][1148.65](applause) And do you have any family members joining you this evening? Okay, no, okay. They're watching at home on TV. Okay. Thank you for joining us, and we'd like for you to take a picture up front. At the annual Virginia High School League State Forensics Meet held in March, he captured the top award in extemporaneous speaking. Those participating in extemporaneous speaking are provided 30 minutes of preparation time, during which they have to prepare a seven-minute speech. When preparation starts, speakers are offered three questions to answer, and the questions are usually based on current affairs. Our next honoree performed well, earning state recognition. Please congratulate our state champ, Warwick Senior John Nick. John, please come forward.[1254.83][1254.83](applause) John participated in two preliminary rounds before capturing the final championship in Group 5A. He was one of a handful of competitors in extemporaneous speaking. During the state tournament rounds, he had to speak on three topics: U.S. tax policy, Latin American relations, and the U.S. Supreme Court. And of course, he did so successfully. John, again, congratulations on this well-deserved moment.[1292.58][1292.58](applause) I'm gonna ask you to take a picture, but while John is getting set up here, I'd like to also acknowledge, I know he has a family member joining him. Would you please stand and be recognized?[1306.78][1306.78](applause) In Newport News Public Schools, many often hear, "Smart is something you become." Tonight, we're also recognizing 24 dedicated educators who took that to heart and have earned a master's degree in reading from the University of Virginia. This cohort has successfully completed a rigorous course of study, and it's been a three-year journey of reading, learning, practicing, and refining. Please join me in congratulating Delshima Bonner. Is it Bonner?[1366.71][1366.71](applause) Nai She Gibson,[1422.21][1422.21](applause) and Michelle Young.[1550.28][1550.28](applause)[1551.28][1551.28](laughter) It's a good problem to have, right? The graduates of the Master's Degree Program in Reading that you see before you are certified to teach the spectrum of readers, pre-K through 12th grade. They will now serve as reading models and leaders for the educators across the school division. Joining them this evening is their support team. As I mentioned earlier, this was like a three-year-long process. So joining them this evening are members of their family and their school families, and also the coordinator of this program, Angela Rhett, our Program Administrator of Development and Expertise. Would you all please stand and be recognized?[1596.88][1596.88](applause) And their administrators as well. Thank you.[1604.28][1604.28](applause) Congratulations again. We're looking forward to great things from all of you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now, before you leave, we're gonna take a picture. I'm not sure how this is gonna work out.[1619.11][1619.11](laughter) I'm gonna get out of the way. How about that?
(inaudible)
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 So we'll stand in recess for about eight minutes. Thank you.
As a visual sign of support, gardens full of blue pinwheels have sprouted up across Newport News, many in front of schools, churches, and businesses. As a symbol of the fun and whimsical nature of childhood, the pinwheel reminds everyone that all children deserve a safe, loving, and nurturing environment to support their growth and development. Newport News Public Schools supports a childhood free of abuse and full of love and support. At General Stanford Elementary, the Kindness Club led the school's efforts during Youth Violence Prevention Week. Located on Fort Eustis, General Stanford invited the U.S. Army Family Advocacy Program to talk to kindergarten through second graders about the significance of the pinwheels. The students then paraded to the front of the school to plant their own silent garden with 340 pinwheels, giving children a voice against abuse. At Denby Early Childhood Center, city leaders joined our youngest students as they planted a silent garden along Warwick Boulevard. Throughout the day, classes took turns planting almost 400 pinwheels, with Newport News police officers lending a helping hand to the worthy cause. During the month of February, Nelson Elementary's Leadership Club advertised and sold Caregrams to raise money for their own silent garden. Nelson's students also researched facts about child abuse and were invited to the city's 10th Annual Silent Children's Garden Ceremony to share some of the heartbreaking statistics. Organized by the Blue Ribbon Committee, the ceremony began with the presentation of colors by Menchville High School's Air Force JROTC cadets. Superintendent of Schools, Dr. George Parker, presented a keynote message to the audience of students, families, elected officials, and community partners. Dr. Parker spoke about the importance of our children enjoying a stress-free family environment, not growing up too fast, and how our community can partner together to support a safe childhood for all children in Newport News. Students fully realize their academic potential when families and teachers work together. So the teaching staff at General Stanford Elementary ventured beyond the school walls to visit with students and families as the PALS and SOL testing dates crept closer. Organized by specialized instructor Tiffany Jones, General Stanford hosted a PALS and SOL Neighborhood Block Party at a community park on the Fort Eustis base. The whole school was invited, with almost 200 students and family members joining in on the late afternoon gathering. Students were able to select and take home free books that were donated by General Stanford's teachers and staff. Cool treats and other gifts made the party complete. For the parents, this was a great opportunity to talk with teachers face-to-face about the upcoming tests, while the knowledgeable teachers shared tips and strategies for parents to support their student success at home. General Stanford's staff looks forward to future opportunities to meet with families off-campus as they continue to build strong relationships and open beneficial lines of communication to fully support student achievement. When seniors graduate from an achievable dream middle and high school, it's not the end of the dream. Instead, the graduating class commits to a new dream as they venture into college, the military, or their chosen career and begin living life on their own. During Sponsors' Day, financial supporters, servicemen and women, first responders, elected officials, and city, school, and community leaders were invited to a special lunch at the school. The honored guests were able to chat with third through fifth-grade students from an Achievable Dream Academy while dining on a delicious meal kindly provided by Chick-fil-A's Kevin Harrison. After lunch, the class of 2019 participated in the Third Annual Commitment Ceremony. Wearing the shirts of their future colleges and universities, the graduating seniors signed their commitments to invest in their own future by showing up to class on time, believing in themselves, and remembering that an achievable dream loves them. The students also made updated versions of their dream mirrors that were started years ago in elementary school. The 53 seniors applied to over 300 institutions of higher learning and received an amazing 201 acceptance letters. And two students are jump-starting their careers by joining the Navy and the Newport News Police Department. Even though this commitment carries the students beyond the walls of an achievable dream, the knowledge, skills, and love that have been bestowed on these graduates will forever guide their dreams. Across the nation, childhood bullying plagues our schools. Newport News Public Schools has implemented a range of programs and works closely with community partners to ensure every student has a safe and nurturing environment to learn in. Time and again, the most important method for creating a positive school culture is when students, parents, families, and the community stand together to put an end to bullying and harassing behaviors. This collective partnership was on full display during a family forum on bullying hosted by the NNPS Youth Development Team at the Denby Community Center. Over 70 people attended the evening event, including students, parents, educators, community partners, city employees, bus drivers, and police officers. The purpose of the collaborative work session was to identify some of the challenges that hinder bullying prevention while developing an action plan to effectively address the most prevalent types of bullying in our schools. Virginia Center for Inclusive Communities has a longstanding partnership with Newport News Schools. VCIC regularly provides workshops and retreats for students and staff to build a community of leaders who work together in promoting inclusion, trust, and diversity. During the family forum, VCIC led a brainstorming session where attendees were able to work in small groups to voice their concerns, share ideas, and work towards practical solutions to decrease harassment and bullying in our schools. Moving forward, the Youth Development Team is excited to implement some of the ideas shared at the Family Forum on Bullying, to prevent harassment at our schools, on buses, and the growing threat of cyberbullying, to create a safe and welcoming environment
Welcome back, and hope you enjoyed our School Board Spotlight. Before we move the agenda, joining us this evening is School Board Representative to the School Board for calendar year 2019-2020, Nazir Gore. Nazir, would you please stand? Nazir is currently a junior at Warwick High School and will begin his official term as a student representative on July 1st. So we look forward to working with you. You've got big shoes to fill. We've been saying that every year. This is my fifth year on the board, and I can tell you, every year, we continue to step up the game. So you have like five pairs of shoes to fill, you're number six. But we're looking forward to it. You want to come to the mic and say anything real quick? We'll put you on the spot real quick.
Does this rotate?
No, you can just speak.
Okay. Hello, my name is Isaiah Gore. I am currently a junior at Warwick High School. Throughout my life, I have always been like the shy person in the classroom, and throughout kind of middle school and high school, I've had principals and assistant principals, Mr. Branson. Dr. Mason just left, but she's been like a really good support system. But I've had those people that were always there to help me kind of develop as a student leader, and I've kind of, I know, I have like so much to say, but I don't want to take a lot of your time, so I will look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you very much. So we'll move the agenda. At this time, I believe, during this port-of-arc meeting, we provide the public the opportunity to address the board. These are scheduled at the early part of the agenda and then again at the end of the agenda. The board considers this an opportunity to listen to your comments. Please understand that we will consider your comments and get back with you at a later time. So as your name is called, please abide by our three-minute limit. When you begin, the green light comes on, the yellow light signals that you have 30 seconds, the red light and the beep, we are asking for you to bring your comments to a close. And that being said, we do have cards here today. So first up, we have Ms. Lou Maynard. Hello, Ms. Lou.
Good evening, school board members and Dr. Parker. As you said, my name is Lou Maynard. I'm actually the Vice President for the PTA for Newport News Council. And tonight, I would like to present four scholarships to four seniors this evening. I would ask that Ms. Bertha Thompson and, well, yes, she join me for just a brief moment so that we can do the awards, if that's okay with you all. Is that okay?
Okay. When I call your names, if you can remain standing, you want to come on this side? Courtney Seota. Courtney Seota is currently a senior at Mitchfield High School. In the fall, she's going to be attending Thomas Nelson Community College. And Sanaya Higgs, she is a senior at Heritage High School. Sanaya will be attending College of William Mary in the fall. Devin Hyman. Devin is a senior at Woodside High School. He will be attending Bridgewater College this fall. Next, we have Denise Smith. Denise is a senior at Achievable Dream High School. She will be attending Norfolk State University this fall. Each of the seniors received a $500 scholarship on behalf of the entire Newport News Council PTA. We would like to thank you for all that you've done this year, and we wish you much success in the fall and the rest of the year.
Thank you. Good luck, guys. Awesome. Wonderful. Thank you very much. You said a president, so I hope that the next person to come up, I hope we have scholarships Next, we have Kevin Crowder. Crowder?
Good afternoon, Mr. Hunter, members of the board. Thank you for allowing me the time to present before you. I come to you on behalf of my son Donovan, who is a student at Booker T. Washington. We transferred him from Crenston Middle to Booker T. just before the Christmas holiday, and our issue has been with the bus situation, transportation situation. Initially, when he transferred, his first day, actually riding the bus, I had to chase the bus driver down because she failed to even, I guess, look at her card or report that she had a new stop. And then we came to find out that the stop where he was stopping, he was the only student, and the bus, both in dropping off and picking up, goes right past our house every day. We have since gotten this situation rectified with the Transportation Department. However, I wanted to bring it to your attention because it should not have taken as much time and as much pain as it has. And then, on the back end of it, when the change did occur, the first day that the bus driver, the morning bus driver decided to come on the street, she decided she was going to, you know, not even come to the middle of the block, as is pretty much stated whenever you look at the bus, the transportation route, you know, it's the middle of the block. We live in Huntington Heights, so of course, we're sandwiched by Ward and Huntington, Warwick Boulevard, Huntington Avenue, both one-way streets. So the first day, she parked pretty much on the Huntington End, and he had to walk all the way down. And as soon as he got on the bus, the statement that was made to him was, "She's not going to be picking up right in front of his door." And while that's not what we were expecting, we definitely were expecting that she would come to the middle of the street. And so just wanted to raise that to your attention as far as courtesy of bus drivers and understanding, as well as some additional initiative upon the Transportation Department when an issue is raised to say, "Hey, our kid is the only kid getting on the bus," as well as when you have bus drivers say, "Hey, this student is the only one, you know, getting on at this stop," to make it simpler to make those bus stop changes. And with that, I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Eric McCaskill.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Exciting evening. Dr. Parker and distinguished board members and fellow community stakeholders, everyone stakeholder ready? Just want to be sure. My name's Eric R. McCaskill. First of all, I'm a product of Newport News Public Schools. Grew up in the East End area, came from a family with absentee dad, came from a family, absentee mom who chose to live in New York, but I had grandparents and neighbors and teachers to help a young man who had speech impediment, who had some issues, learning issues, to graduate from Huntington High School as an athlete, go to Purdue University, and next month will be the anniversary of the Black Cultural Center, of which yours truly was the voice for the students at Purdue University, and will be recognized next month, June 29th. I'm excited about the school division and how it's being advanced with creative energy of new leadership in ways that we have not experienced before. I can say this because I am a product of Newport News Public Schools. This being said, I stand before you today as a partner in education. Dr. Parker, your vision for post-entry plan has an inclusive tool that I firmly believe would enhance the effective implementation of that vision, and I'll share that with you. As a master facilitator of the Evidence-Based Virtues Project, parent educator for the Juvenile and Domestic Relations Courts, and a consultant in restorative discipline, I know that the relevant changes of Newport News that affects adults and children. As a parent educator, I have been trained in childhood trauma and the effects of adverse childhood experiences, or ACEs, and on school performance and behavior in our schools. As an advocate of student efficacy and master-based education, my team offers the Standards of Character, abbreviated SOC, in schools to resolve many of the challenges that confront Newport News Public Schools. The challenges that I know of are the disproportionate number of suspensions of African-American learners, effective classroom management, the need to assist administrative leadership that promotes inclusion and dignity in terms of young administrators. Previous to this meeting, I met with Chief Drew, and he brought another And he brought another concern, and that's school-based arrest, where resource officers may arrest a student. And to prevent any type of incarceration, there's a restorative practice, which we can share more about. Having met your counterpart, Dr. Jeffrey Smith, he's open to the inclusion of the Standards of Character Initiative. It takes a village with virtues adults and resources to save our children. In the words of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King, "When people are caught up in doing what is right and are willing to sacrifice for it, there's no stopping point of victory." I decree and declare victory for our students, parents, and teachers in Newport News Public Schools. Thank you.
And next, we have Ms. Jamie Baysmore.
Good evening. Hope everyone is doing fine on this wonderful day. Mr. Chairman, the members of the school board, and Mr. Superintendent. The first thing that I want to say is, Mr. Superintendent, you did a crackerjack job of presenting the budget to the city council and most of all, to the general public. I think a lot of the, that a lot of us understood more the intricacies and the formulas and the pie charts as a whole. We understood that a lot better, thanks to all of you that were involved in the budget process for your long, hard fight to get the school fully funded. Your hard work has not gone unnoticed, and I think that our city council received an education as well as now understand how serious we are about funding education in this city. The concerned citizens of Huntington and the Huntington Alumni Association are just as serious about the future of Huntington Middle School. We feel that it is unacceptable that the doors of Huntington will close in June 2020 unless something is done now to alter this disastrous situation. We have asked that the sixth graders be brought back to Huntington at Heritage in September 2020. Sure, people say it's not, excuse me, it's not an ideal situation. But we do have a model, which is Achievable Dream, where the middle school and the high school are in the same location. The other thing is that Huntington at Heritage will be a temporary situation because we're going to get the school rebuilt. We should be starting to rebuild Huntington in 2020. Instead, the mayor is telling us that it will be another two years before anything is started. And funding, of course, has not been allocated yet. With this unacceptable timeline, we are looking at there no longer being a Huntington Middle School for another four or five years. This is unacceptable. We are asking the school board and school division to please come up with a plan to keep Huntington's doors open. We continue to trust you to make sure that Huntington shall rise again. Please don't let us down. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Mr. James Lovett, Jr.
Good evening, school board members, superintendent, Mr. Hunter and other school board members. My name is James Lovett. I'm from Twenty-Five Riverlands Drive, Newport News, Virginia. I'm here on behalf of the Concerned Citizens Voter Registration Drive. I've been talking to several people and it's in my heart to do voter registration in the Newport News and Hampton Public School system. I mean, I go over to the city hall, I mean, City Hall, and I see there's three or four people working in the office, in the voter registration office. And they just don't seem like they have enough time to go out to the schools to do voter registration. I mean, I'm retired military. I do substitute teaching when I want to or can, and I have a lot of free time. And it's within my heart to do voter registration within the school system. And I need some help. I need to get into those schools. I'm nonpartisan. I don't, you know, I don't tell people about, you know, who to vote for when I'm, you know, with my voter registration cap on, you know. I mean, I tell them, hey, you know, like, I can't talk to you about it because I'm doing voter registration, okay? Next thing is, I'm pleased and thankful to the school board for trying to make sure that Huntington Middle School is rebuilt. I mean, it's a need for Huntington Middle School to rebuild, rebuild in the southeast area. And the third thing is, that's it.
Peggy Purcell?
Something was brought to my attention recently, and I thought that I might share it with you. Do you know who Colaspe Huntington was? Well, now you do know. He was a man that envisioned education for blacks not to include Hampton University and a school down in Georgia, I believe, where he, Alabama? Thank you for the correction. This man was dedicated, and he was the one who first came up with the idea of a Huntington High School and Huntington High School for Blacks. Now, he had that vision during the eighteen, early nineteen hundreds. What is wrong with us? He left us that school for a reason. He wanted to make sure that black children were educated, and he took it one step further, even illiterate blacks who were slaves. He was very instrumental in them receiving educations as well. And like I've taken the time to say, he's left us with that vision that he had. And right now, I just feel that the vision is being stomped. Huntington High School is going to be torn down, and it seems like that'll be the end of it, but it won't. Because with every breath I have in my body, every bit of blood that I have going through my veins, I will not give up on this. I will be standing here until y'all say that it's a done deal and nothing else can be done. I wonder what Colaspe Huntington is thinking right now. As I look at the school board, many of you are blacks. This was a white man who took it upon himself to make sure that the blacks in East End had a school. Something to think about.
Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? Are there any more cards? There being none, we will move the agenda to item number three, our consent agenda. Three-point-oh-one, the minutes, city council, school board joint meeting, April sixteen, twenty-eight, nineteen. Three-point-oh-two, the minutes, work session, April sixteen, twenty-nineteen. Three-point-oh-three, minutes, regular meeting, April sixteen, twenty-nineteen. Three-point-oh-four, financial reports, child nutrition services, April twenty-nineteen, revenue and expenses, April twenty-nineteen. Three-point-oh-five, personnel report. Three-point-oh-six, aviation academy lease. And three-point-oh-seven, the V S B A legislative proposal. You have that in your package. Can we get a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. You heard the motion and you heard the second. Time for the question. Let's start, Ms. Simon.
I actually do have a comment. I was going through the financial narrative, and I just wanted to point something out for the public. We did have, we did underspend our budget this year by six million. And the things that we are spending this on are really vital projects, and I just want to make sure everybody understands that. Water and intrusion and mold mitigation at Heinz and Gildersleeve, paving, clock replacements, fire and intrusion upgrades, computer refresh, carpet and flooring in ten schools, electrical panel replacement in seven schools. Like, these are really important things that we are using this cash capital for. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that when there is some cash capital at the end of the year, that we're putting it toward real needs that we have in all of our schools. And I just, I saw that today when I was reading through, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody, and for transparency, that people understand that when there is, there are funds that weren't spent, that they go to very needy projects in our schools. That's all, sorry.
No? Anyone? Vice Chair, Mr. Brown?
Just a comment about the Aviation Academy in terms of the, we are spending money paying to that, to the Airport Commission for the facility that we're using. And over time, we've not seen the facility maintained in a manner that we, that is, feels in the best interest of kids. And so I do see that we're going for one more year, but I want us to, I want to bring to the board's attention and the public's attention that that is a facility that is in need of repair and attention, and that is not, similar to all of our other facilities, it's not a sustainable condition.
Anyone else? There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll. Four?
Four.
Four.
Best. Mr. Brown. Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to the action items. Item four-point-one, a proposed textbooks adoption. We heard the report at our last meeting. If there's any questions, could we get a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. It's time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mrs. Surles Law.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Our next item, four-point-oh-two, the budget approval. Dr. Parker, do you have anything to enlighten us on that?
Unless the board has questions, Mr. Chairman, we submitted the information in the board packet as, just for the public's information. The city did pass a budget recently. Our request, our ask from the city was two-point-four million dollars to be included in our operational budget to balance the approved FY twenty budget. The city did pass a budget that gave us two-point-four million dollars in cash capital that will be available in the city's operational budget. However, this budget that we're putting before you tonight will not increase our operational budget by two-point-four million dollars. We, the amount of the operational budget will still be the same as this current year, which is one-hundred-and-ten-point-nine million dollars. So that would reflect level funding of the operational budget for the FY twenty period. However, some of our, you've also been included with a list of items that we will provide the city in maintenance-related items that can be paid with cash capital out of their budget. Hearing that, Mr. Chair, we ask that you approve this budget, which will allow us to move forward with the initiatives that we have identified in the FY twenty budget, which includes compensation, the addressing our health care needs and staffing needs that were proposed, that were passed by this board in March.
Okay. Do you have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
You heard the motion, you heard the second. Time for the question.
Mr. Chairman, just a question of clarification. So the two-point-four million in cash capital, when is that money scheduled to be received or to be spent? In the fall or in this budget?
According to the city manager, and I do not have a written document to reflect that conversation, but according to the city manager, that money, those monies will be reflected in their, that was reflected in the budget that they passed in cash capital. So upon approving that budget, those dollars should be available as of July first. I would advise the board to consider a resolution at the June meeting, which may also reflect the commitment to Huntington, the access to the two-point-four million dollars in cash capital, and our commitment to work with them on long-range initiatives, such as a revenue sharing agreement and long-term commitment to funding capital improvement needs such as new construction and renovations. I believe that we have to have a paper trail with these type of agreements that we engage in with the city. Sometimes when you have something in writing, it leads to a better relationship and a better partnership. So I would advise the board, since we are just going with conversations at this point, to move forward with a resolution to reflect not only our commitment, but our ask and clarification of how that will be handled.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. We've been advised by you just now. So I believe that by next meeting, we will have a resolution, and then we can have an automize, a list of those things that the two-point-four million dollars will pay for. And then we have that resolution, and then we can approve it, and that way, we can then forward it on to the city council for their record. Is that correct, if I'm legal? Okay, did we all agree with that? We didn't vote, but we'll have something to vote on at our next meeting. So you heard the motion, you heard the second. Any more questions?
And, Mr. Chairman, just for clarity about the vote that we're about to take. So we, for the public's awareness, there's about one-hundred-and-ten million dollars is what the city has proposed to provide us, which would be level funding, the same amount of funding that we received last year in operating budget. We went to the city to make a request of an additional two-point-four million dollars in our operating funds, and that request was not fulfilled. And instead, the funds are, we're going to be able, we have a promise to use some capital funds in the future, but no additional operating funds were provided by the city.
That is correct, that we, the budget that we did submit on paper, and to be clear, the budget was, they did approve, they're giving us enough money.
They matched the dollar amount.
The dollar amount, they did not increase our operating budget. So that's a difference, that's suffice for this year. It's a short-term fix, it's a one-year fix. So we did not get the budget increase.
And I'm only bringing that to, bring that to mind because the money not being in an operating budget means that we cannot use it year over year, which means that it impacts our ability to support salaries, benefits, and other things for our staff, having one-time cash capital funds. Then it can only be used one time for a cash project, so it's not, so we did not receive money that is sustainable for operations.
That is correct. So those individuals, those additional staffs that we are going to hire with those funds, if we get no money next year, we are on the hook to come out of our operating budget to pay for those salaries. Those additional salaries.
Right, and with that being said, Mr. Chairman, I agree with the resolution, but I also think the board need to get some recommendations on others than the resolution, which is great. I think we have to know what our options are, and I'm talking legal options. I'm sure no one wants to hear that conversation, but at the end of the day, we are tasked with the, we were elected to serve our kids fully. And I would like to know, what is my left and right limits? So if this fails again, you know, what are our options to move forward, to force them to support us? Thank you.
We can certainly, Mr. Wall and I certainly advise you information on your options in reference to what you may feel is an underfunded operational.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, Ms. Buffalo, call a roll.
Mr. Hunter.
Four.
Ms. Simons.
Four.
Mrs. Surles Law.
Four.
Dr. Best.
Four.
Mr. Brown.
Four.
Mr. Ely.
Four.
Mr. Harris.
Four.
Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. That's why I love this board. I can see the passion about getting, having enough funds to do the work that we need to do in order to educate our students here. So again, I would like to thank my board and Dr. Parker and his team, Mary Lou and her team, for presenting a budget that was just, and even though it was not funded in the manner that we the manner that we would want it to fund it, we have lots of work to do in front of us. Let's move the agenda. Item, we have a new item here, we've got an item, four point oh three, nomination for Mr. Douglas Brown for V S B A Tidewater Regional Chair. Just to kind of give you an insight, our Vice Chair on our Board, Mr. Brown, is currently the Vice Chair of the Tidewater Region of the V S B A. And he represents us as the Vice, well, he's the Vice Chair for the whole region. Mr. Brown seeks the Chair position for the coming year in order for him to, part of the nomination submittal process. This Board, by majority vote, must agree to have him run on behalf of our Board. And also, that decision must be done in the open, in a test to here at a formal Board meeting. So to, to help Mr. Brown out, we put it on agenda so that he can get all the necessary paperwork and, you know, we wish him good luck and I know he would do a wonderful job as the Chair. You whip us in shape, you know? And so I know you'll, you'll get the Tidewater, continue and do things better for them as well. So if no one has any questions, can we get a motion to have Mr. Douglas Brown, our Vice Chair, put his name in, submittal paperwork to be the Chair of the Tidewater Region?
So moved. Second.
You heard the motion, then you heard the second, time for the question. There being none, Ms. Buffalo, please call a roll.
My pleasure. Mr. Hunter?
Four.
Ms. Simons?
Four.
Mrs. Searls Law?
Four.
Dr. Best?
Four.
Mr. Brown?
Oh, abstained.
Oh, you abstained, okay.
You go for yourself.
I abstained, I abstained.
Mr. Ely?
Four.
Mr. Harris?
Four.
Motion carries six, yea, one abstain.
Okay, thank you.
Great things are happening in Newport News Public Schools, even on this School Board. We're going to move to reports. First report we have is five point oh one, the federal funding application. Ms. Robinson will give us a report. Good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, School Board Chair, Mr. Hunter, Vice Chair Mr. Brown, Board Members and Dr. Parker. The Federal Program Team appreciate the opportunity to support the Division's academic agenda by providing strategic support that aligns with every Student Succeed Act, or E S S A. I will be sharing the federal funding plan and application for Title One, Title Two, Title Three and Title Four Grant for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. In addition, I will share a three year trend and expenditures for each grant. At this time, the V D O E has asked that we use level funding for each of our grants for the two thousand nineteen, twenty school year. The purpose of our team, and I have to say I have a very supportive team, they all stayed this evening and with support all in the back row there, so I do appreciate them coming out and supporting me. Again, the purpose of our team is to secure and manage the federal grant that support equitable services to students. The support is provided through, in the amounts of, for Title One, nine point five million dollars plus some, for Title Two, in the amount of one point one plus million dollars. For Title Three, one hundred and fifty one thousand eighty dollars and for Title Four, Part Eight, six hundred and eighty two thousand, seven hundred and eighty two, eighty seven dollars. The programs are meant to complement what currently is offered in Newport News Public Schools. And at this point, I want to provide a quick visual of some of the things that we do with all of our Title Federal Programs Grants. faces. So again, I want to review for Title One, what I want to do is give you, provide you with a three year trend. And the purpose of Title One is to meet the needs of students by ensuring fair, equal and significant opportunities to improve academic achievement in schools with the highest concentration of low income families. And as you review the, the slide, you can see that the first two years, there was a bit of an increase, but then the last year, for two thousand eighteen, nineteen, there was a decrease. The, they did tell us ahead of time that there will be a decrease so that we could plan accordingly. So again, our Title One, the focus again is for our elementary, we have four pre-K centers that we use those funds for, as well as fourteen elementary schools. And this totals over nine thousand kids that we use these funds to support. Here are the list of schools, again, as you can see, they're all elementary or pre-K, these are the schools that the Title One funds at nine point nine million support. And as far as Title One, support pre-K identified elementary schools, the bulk of that money is for salaries and benefits. Over, I think it's about ninety-five percent of those funds go for salary and benefits, specifically supporting interventionists and also a great deal of our pre-K staff. And then of course, there's a, a small portion for miscellaneous contract services, transportation and things of that nature. For Title Two, this one is for teacher equity. The purpose of Title Two, again, improves the quality of teacher leadership through recruitment and professional development. And as you can see, each one of those years, the three year trend is showing a, a decrease, especially the seventeen, eighteen, again, part of this could be, was due to the fact that Title Two funds, some of those funds or some of those services was moved over into another grant. So that showed a, a significant decrease for the seventeen, eighteen year. And this particular grant serves pre-K all the way through twelfth grade and also professional development opportunities for the entire staff. For Title Two, the bulk of Title Two's funds go into instruction, specialists and coaches. So that, it's salary and fringe benefits, small portion for miscellaneous, and then there is a portion for private schools. So we do support our private schools with some of those funds as well. For Title Three, this is our language instruction for English learner and immigrant students. We have, again, a hundred and fifty one thousand. As you can see, over the past three years of this, these funds have increased about five thousand dollars or so over the, the past three years. And the bulk of that, those funds come from the school division. So we do have a lot of funds for Title Three that comes out of school, school division Again, if you look at how we break down Title Three, E S L, school and family engagement personnel, and then small portions for technology as well as professional development, and then also miscellaneous. Then our Title Four is somewhat of a new grant, we started seventeen, eighteen, this grant is a two year grant. Our first funds, of course, was two hundred and sixty-one, and then we increased a great deal. And this grant serves all of Newport News K through twelve. Some of the things that we do with this particular grant, they actually break this grant into three different sections, one is well rounded, safe and healthy, and then technology. And we break the, the funds down to be able to provide support for other programs throughout the Division. Some of them listed there, A P and I B, training and counseling, bullying, active lifestyle, of course, professional development. And then along, in addition with this grant, we also provide some funds for our private schools as well. And then our Federal Programs Department also works with Virginia Preschool Initiative, four pre-K centers, seventy-two classes, one thousand two hundred and ninety-six students that we serve, and that is in the amount of four point five million, as well as our school improvement grants. This year, we are serving eight schools, five elementary and three middle school, in the amount of four point nine million. And overview, again, Title One, nine point five million plus, Title Two, one point one million plus, Title Three, one hundred and fifty one thousand, and then Title Four, six hundred and eighty-two plus, for a total of eleven point five plus million dollars that we work with throughout our, our department. So our next step is for Board Approval by June, two thousand nineteen, and to be submitted to the Virginia Department of Education on July first, excuse me, July first, two thousand And at this point, I would like to thank all of you for listening, and if you have any questions, I will do my best to answer.
Any questions? Oh, no questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Okay. Next, we'll have five point oh two, our handbook revisions.
Good evening, Mr. Hunter, Dr. Parker, members of the Board. I'm delighted to be here this evening and I'm pleased to bring to you a proposed revision to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. As we begin this evening, I would like to remind you that our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook is a tool that provides guidance to our students, our families and our staff. This is why this book is important. I would like to once again, share with you our youth development model. You have seen this document many times before because it is a living, breathing document that we constantly update and revise. Level one are our supports for all students. Level two are supports for some students. And level three are supports for a few students. In taking a closer look at level one, our universal supports for all students, here we find the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. There are several phases to our revision process. After reviewing guidelines and recommendations, we begin to gather stakeholder input from multiple groups. Recommendations and information gathered from the V D E O E, student conduct guidelines, which are in the revision phase right now, and the General Assembly. Our student discipline data is also used in this process. A detailed review of the eighteen, nineteen discipline will be provided at a later time. Additionally, our stakeholder input this year included Sage students, school based administrators, central office staff and families. Once again, this year, we were able to survey our families through Parent View. We received over one thousand responses. Eighty-six percent reported the handbook easy to locate, eighty-six percent found it easy to understand, and eighty-six percent said it was a helpful resource. So after gathering feedback from our students, our administrators, our staff, our families and more, I am delighted to bring to you this evening, one recommended change to our Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. This is a new piece of legislation that was passed by the General Assembly and signed into law by the Governor that needed to, that needs to be included into our handbook this year. This is an amendment to the current Rule Eleven violation. This change will add language, will add the language nicotine vapor products to the Rule Eleven violation, which addresses the use of tobacco and nicotine products. As we look ahead to next year, there are two items to be evaluated, the dress code policy and the cell phone policy. We plan to evaluate those two policies with different groups of stakeholders, including citywide student government, Sage, parent, teacher advisory groups and administrators. In March of this year, we launched the Student Discipline Task Force, which focuses on examining practices around student discipline in Newport News Public Schools. Part of the work of the Student Discipline Task Force is to develop revision recommendations for the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook for the two thousand twenty, twenty-one school year. Thank you for giving me this opportunity this evening to present this proposed revision to the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. At this time, I would be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Jones?
Great report, I just have a good question.
Yes, ma'am.
So it seems to me, and there's a little bit of, kind of discontention and frustration within the student body, that we've been hearing that the dress code has been under evaluation since, for the past few years. So my question really is, when will the dress code stop being under evaluation and start actually being changed? Because we're still suffering the same grievances that we've been trying to address for the past few years.
Thank you for your question, it's a very good question. I think one of the things that we're going to do is, we're working with our administrators on how we're going to apply it, so it's applied more consistently across the Division. In addition to, as I've stated previously in this presentation, we will definitely evaluate it and we're going to take this topic to the table and speak with all stakeholders and definitely bring something back to the Board for consideration for the upcoming, for the twenty twenty-one school year.
And, and I was going to reiterate the same thing, Maria. I think we have to have the dialogue necessary to get something of, of substance that we can bring back to the Board, who is the, who are the policymaking body. And we haven't come to consensus on what that is. I know we had a workshop earlier and talked about dress code, but I don't think we reached much consensus even in that group or had the time to really flesh out the ideas that the students shared at that, at that Sage meeting. We do intend to follow up on that Sage, on the recommendations that were collected at that Sage meet, meeting under new leaders, under the new leadership, and hopefully bring policy to the Board next year that they can, can consider. But they are the policymaking body, the principals have to weigh in on that, the teachers and all of our other stakeholders, parents, stakeholders who we have not heard from yet in terms of dress code revisions.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Dr. Best?
I too would like to commend you for a very thorough job with the student handbook. As a former administrator, I was very familiar with the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook. And so when parents call, it makes me feel really good that I can open up that book, I keep it with me, I actually have two copies, and I can refer them to that student handbook and everything is there. And even a couple of the parents, they, well, so something you might consider is, I don't know how we can get them to actually read it and maybe just peruse, just to familiar, because they were like, I've had it, but I never looked at it before, but I can take them to pages, I can take them to what the infraction is, I can take them to the range of consequences. So it's, it's a really good document and I would just like to let you know, hope you know that.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thanks. And, Mr. Vice Chair?
Yeah, a similar comment that I think the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook as well, it's a very comprehensive document, it's great that it gives you a range of things so that you're able to communicate with the public, well, if this is what's happened, this is what, this is the punishment that you can expect or the consequences that you can expect from the Division. So it's, it's great in terms of the, the. So it's, it's great in terms of the, uh, the transparency that we're able to, to show to the public. And along those lines, um, question, do, can we have a quiz or are there a test to give to students and parents on the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook? We considered something like that to ensure that they are reading it and actually digesting it because what we find is that oftentimes they haven't read it until something happens, and then that's when they suddenly become, you know, very astute reader of the, of the handbook. And then, and then my, my second question was just around, um, we've talked a lot about the, the good behavior policy in the past, and, um, that's a, I think it's a, you know, a great idea and that was presented to the board previously, that a student who has exhibited good behavior over a period of time can petition to have their record revised, to have infractions removed from their record. But there were still so, a lot of things to be ironed out as far as what kinds of things could be removed and what was the, what was the full process for getting things removed from their record. Have we put some additional thought into that, or when can we expect to come back to the board with the, uh, the full detailed plan of, of the good behavior policy and how it can be carried out?
Okay, to address your first question, um, what we encourage people to do using their PBI's processes that we have in place, the Positive Behavioral Interventional Supports, um, at the beginning of the school year and throughout the school year because we want to reinforce those expectations. Um, we encourage them to go to their kids' rights and their responsibilities that are laid out clearly in, I think, page two of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, um, and kind of review that so the kids understand the right and the responsibility that they have as students in our school division. Um, also, going to your second question regarding the, um, good behavior policy, we do have a guiding document that the administrators have, and it kind of outlines to them and gives them suggestions on how to build their committee to, um, uh, review the good behavior applications that are submitted. And we do have late, uh, within that document, that guiding document, informa, uh, things that, that will not be considered um, as okay to remove from students' records. So one thing that we can do, um, as when we provide the eighteen nineteen, um, discipline review to you all, we, I would be happy to also include a little more in-depth information around good behavior.
Anyone else? Uh, thank you.
All right, as a reminder, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, um, I seek your approval of the proposed revision of the Rights and Responsibilities Handbook at the June eighteenth board meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We have another report, five point oh three, Extended Learning, Taking a Look at Spark and Step. Mr. Tyler?
Good evening, Chairman Hunter, Vice Chairman Brown, Dr. Parker, all members of the board. Um, I'm Anthony Tyler. I'm the Extended Learning Administrator here for Newport News Public Schools, and I will be presenting this evening, Extended Learning, Taking a Look at Spark and Step. Our summer program for arts recreation and knowledge famously known as SPARC exposes students to coursework from the upcoming grade, giving them a jump start on success and preventing and eliminating summer slide. SPARC is a free kid, free to kindergarten to eighth grade students, enrolled in Newport News Public Schools, and includes meals and transportation. SPARC offers a wide range of learning opportunities, including enrichment activities beyond the academic period. SPARC was recognized as a National School Boards Association Magna Award winner for exemplary and innovative student learning. In two thousand and fifteen, we had two thousand students in SPARC. Then it grew to fifty-five hundred in two thousand and sixteen. And for summers twenty seventeen and twenty eighteen, we reached six thousand students. And we are projected to have six thousand plus for this summer twenty nineteen. As you are all aware, during SPARC twenty eighteen, we had an evaluation from outside agency, the Shaffer Evaluation Group. Um, here are a few quotes from Dr. Patricia Shaffer from the evaluation that was presented to you all back in March. Teachers at both elementary and middle school level described their SPARC students as being more ready to learn, more excited about learning, and just more primed to get back in the classroom after summer. And SPARC students generally expressed more confidence in STEM projects. Middle school students that talked and were particularly confident about math skills. I will say, in my work as a program evaluator, I work with a lot of school districts, Shaffer said. I don't often see this. So this was a big aha moment when we received this data back. Shaffer called these grades, especially fifth grade, which had the highest achievement, the sweet spot for influencing academic achievement. From, from the SPARC evaluation, we had some recommendations. And so with Newport News Public Schools, we are here to ensure that schools, um, that attend SPARC achieve academic success. Following topics will be addressed this year. Curriculum revision, remediation to increase literacy and math skills, and student selection. During the evaluate, the evaluation presentation that was presented to the school board in March, there were some steps to improve SPARC presented to you. With the assistance of our curriculum and development department, the following changes have been made to, to improve SPARC twenty seven, tw- twenty, I'm sorry, to improve SPARC twenty nineteen. Criteria developed to identify students needing remediation. Students needing remediation to receive priority enrollment. Curriculum revised to reinforce math and reading based on S O L trends. Targetly daily remediation component added for students. An additional remediation through the Newport News and Women Mary cohort members. Let's take a look at our daily SPARC program. We have seven sites this year. We have three K-two sites, which would be Denby Early Childhood Center, Marshall Early Learning Center, and Sedgfield Elementary School. And we have three three-five sites, which is Epps Elementary, Newsom Park Elementary, and Yates Elementary. Our morning part of SPARC consists of the Elementary Learning Lab. The Learning Lab is an innovative approach to ignite learning for elementary students. The instructional program provides a balance between direct teaching and student application through problem solving. The Learning Lab STEM-infused curriculum offers reinforcement in areas of reading, writing, and math, while challenging students to apply their learning through STEM-based approaches. The afternoon portion of SPARC is the more enrichment-based that is served through our community partners. That includes, we have, we do STEM activities, career readiness initiatives, and field trips for our students. Our middle school portion of SPARC, sixth to eighth grade, will be housed at Gildersley Middle School this summer. The morning part of SPARC middle school looks like with our English camp. The English SPARC camp provides students an opportunity to continue building essential literacy skills in the areas of critical reading, writing, communication, and research from previous year through remediation with enriching experiences to enhance performance in the next year of English. The math camp provides students an opportunity to fill the gaps in their understanding from the previous year through remediation and simultaneously front-loading specific skills for the next year. And the afternoon piece for the middle school as well is enrichment with, through community business partners, field trips, and other experiences. And here are a list of our confirmed SPARC partners for twenty nineteen. There were twenty-three partners that'll be working in SPARC this summer. And here's our SPARC timeline. Um, currently, we are, we just closed the window for student applications last Friday, the seventeenth, and letters will be sent home to students whether they've been accepted into the program or on the waiting list by the thirty-first of, uh, May. And then the first day of the high school session will begin on June twentieth, and then the first day of our K-eight SPARC program will begin on July eighth. And then the last day for all of SPARC, high school and elementary through sixth grade, uh, will end on August first. And now, we have a new addition to our extended learning family. We have a new addition to our extended learning summer family, and that is the Summer Training and Enrichment Program, finally known as STEP. I'm es, I'm especially pleased that Newport News Public Schools will be running the in-school STEP program. This aligns nicely with our SPARC program and other extended learning programs. As a school division, we are committed to ensuring that students have access to learning beyond the regular school day. We know that children who lack summer learning programs are at particular risk of losing academic, social, and emotional, and they have gains throughout, in what they have gained throughout the school year. The twenty nineteen STEP program does, um, design has a new model for service delivery. Our goal is to transition STEP from a ten-week summer program to a systematic year-round initiative. The City of Newport News will serve as the fiscal agent of three strategic partners to deliver a program over a twelve-month period. These partners include Hampton, the Hampton Roads Community Action Program, better known as H R CAP. They will be running the Out-of-School Program for Young Adults from ages eighteen to twenty-four. Newport News Public Schools, that'll be running the in-school program for students sixteen to eighteen years old. And the New Horizons Regional Education Center, that will be providing workforce training and support to all STEP participants. All those STEP stands for Summer Training and Enrichment Program. Our vision is to serve high school students in the summer and the year round. And that goes beyond training. This slide gives you an overview of the basic program. We will be targeting two hundred students from five high schools, Denby, Heritage, Menchville, Warwick, and Woodside. Those students will be placed in a cohort per high school. During the school year, those students, we will be focusing on those students, working with them once a month after school, and giving them bi-monthly experiences, whether it's, um, soft skill training, workforce development, taking them on field trips, bringing in guest speakers, talking about the workforce. Our goal is for students to increase attendance, do better in their classwork, make good decisions, become active part of their community, and develop soft skills and workforce qualifications that will make them competitive in the job market. We welcome this opportunity to enrich the lives of even more students in Newport News Public Schools and to help them develop the skills that will make them competitive in today's workforce. Students in the school division STEP program will receive in terms of career counseling, academic support, and opportunities to share what they have learned through community service. And here is the timeline of the STEP program for our students. We, the application window just closed last Friday, and we are in the process of reviewing student applications this week. Students will be notified, and then we will be having student orientation in June when school lets out for the students to the program. And that concludes my, my presentation on summer learning, SPARC and STEP. Any questions?
Just, uh, add, add, when will the students start working?
They will begin, they will begin work on July eighth. That's the same day as our regular SPARC program, and it will end August first, just like I'll keep them on the same schedule as SPARC.
And could you speak quickly to the type of student we're, we're looking for in this program?
Yes, sir. Uh, we are looking for students that meet certain criteria, whether they receive free reduced lunch, they come from a single-parent household, they've had some academic troubles, some behavioral issues. It might have been in some of our, um, like enterprise or, or the juvenile detention system. So we're looking for those type of kids to try to give them opportunities to give them a new direction and a new view on the workforce and some life skills.
Okay.
Um, Mr. Ely?
Have we had a lot of employers to, in the community sign up to be host for this program this year?
On May third, um, Dr. Parker, Mr. Wright, and myself, we attended, um, a partnership lunch over at the Holiday Inn. The city sponsored that. And that, we believe there were fifty community partners that, at that time, had registered, and I know we received some emails since then. And so I would say fifty-plus partners will be hosting job sites this summer.
Are we still in need for more businesses to be partners for this program?
I believe so. We'll, we'll probably take some more, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
All right. Uh, Dr. Bass?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, sorry.
I, I think I, I think I kind of know the answer, but the reason why Achievable Dream is not included is because they have some similar things in place or?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you just?
Well, they do have, they do have some things in place, and then their, their schedule, summer schedule is a little bit, intercession is.
Conflict?
Yes, conflicts with that.
Okay, Ms. Simons?
So I remember that many of the STEP students were concerned about their salary and earning money. Is there a difference in terms of, like, what are the, the job prospects for the sixteen to eighteen-year-olds that we're having? And then what about the eighteen to twenty-four-year-olds that H R CAP has? Like, what are the different employment situations?
With, I'm, I'm going to speak to our in-school population, sixteen, eighteen-year-olds. Um, the number one goal is for our students, because the question came up about working versus summer school. We want our kids to go to summer school and be able to ma- make their credits and be able to graduate on time. So we're working with the business partners to make sure those students be, that do attend summer school will be able to work after. And so we, we, so they'll be able to still earn, make money, but still get the grades and the need that they need in order to graduate on time.
Okay. So is it more that the H R CAP, the older, the eighteen to twenty-year-old, twenty-four-year-olds, they are having more full-time employment over the summer?
Yes, that, that, that's the goal with them, to get them started, get them be, get them on their feet to be full-time employed.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
One more question. And how many students are y'all taking from STEP again?
We're taking two hundred. Yes, sir.
Do you, do we think that's enough students to fill the capacity of the needs of children that meets those qualifications of being undeserved?
I'm going to say no, but I'm going to give explanation with that. In the past, the city's always targeted about five hundred kids. But by us taking over the program, handling the in-school population, we wanted to start with a number that we could, we can manage right now, and then we'll grow in the future.
So how, is there like a waiting list, or how does that work?
Well, once we review all the applications, students that aren't selected, that they will be put on a waiting list, and they will be in consideration.
Uh, Mr. Brown? So, uh, I love, you know, personally really enjoyed and love summer school. Uh, and I tell people this all the time, that I went to summer school every single summer. My mother made me go to summer school every single summer. Um, so, and, you know, the, but the, the, the power of, of public school, one of the powers is the diversity uh, that exists within, uh, public schools, the diversity of learners. And so the, just the challenge that I would, um, put forward is let's make sure that we're getting a good diversity of learners, because I, what I hear is, um, the, I hear the remediation part, and that's, you know, very necessary for a lot of learners that, that need that. Uh, and then, but the STEP program, it sounds like it's, where the opportunities are not for, uh, everyone, and we want to try to get everyone, give them an opportunity to get involved. My own family and my, myself, I would love the opportunity to do advancement during the summer. And, um, long, I've long been a proponent of that, and I think that's really critically important for, uh, kids having an opportunity to work and get ahead, the kids who want to challenge themselves in that way and want to push themselves to have an opportunity to get ahead. So, um, I hope that as we continue to evolve the program, um, summer school can become popular. I know, right, uh, the president may have a kind of a stigma of, hey, these are, these are the kids who got to, they have to go to summer school as opposed to, you get to go to summer school. It's all, I wanted, uh, the, the part that we have in the afternoon is the great that you get to go to SPARC, but also, um, I want to make sure that, uh, let's get involving more of the learners as well who want to advance themselves and, and do the, uh, moving ahead and getting those kids in the program.
I believe the, the good news is, I think we're, we're working our way backwards. I think, I think the kids who want advancement and enrichment are, have already bought into the SPARC train with all of the, um, select activities that kids have at the afternoons. And we're seeing a lot of those students who, who, uh, select to participate. The, the attendance in SPARC has grown every year. It's been a very successful model. Uh, where we're trying to backtrack is that, just going back to the presentation this, this, at the workshop, then making that connection. We have a significant number of students who have deficits and, uh, who, who would benefit also from a structured remedial program in the summer that would allow them to continue to work on their math literacy and, uh, and, uh, and, and reading, and reading and writing skills in addition to the remediation. So how do we find a happy marriage where we can continue to address, uh, the needs of our students who need to, uh, catch up, but also continue to provide enrichment opportunities that, uh, that, that students who are doing well can address the summer slide from their standpoint? SPARC was built primarily for summer slide, um, which is for students who, uh, who are at grade level, and we don't want them to slip back. Um, so I think there's a happy marriage that we have to find, Mr. Brown, in, in terms of, uh, providing that, that incentive for both students. And I believe that we've done a good job with the STEM-related activities and the field trips and other of the activities in the afternoon that allow students who, um, to, to remain engaged, um, in summer learning. Uh, also, we, we would like to focus more on, on, uh, across the division and across the city, partnering with our partners to address summer reading. Uh, we need to build, uh, students, continue to encourage students to read for pleasure over the summer. Um, and that's something that we all can continue to, uh, maybe to YMCA, the Boys Club, the rec leagues, and everything else. If we could all get on the same page, um, to do that, I think that would be a very powerful thing in our city as well. Because the more kids read, uh, the better, the better their vocabulary becomes. That addresses summer slide in itself. Uh, and, uh, I think we're, we're well on our way to, to working with our partners to, to really start to collaborate on summer reading.
Anyone else? Thank you very much.
Thank you for that opportunity.
Okay. Item number four point, uh, five point oh four, attendance report, five point oh five, membership report, five point oh six, construction report. Uh, were a part of your package. If anyone has any comments on those, we'll move to item five point oh seven, comments by the superintendent. Dr. Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I begin my, uh, my prepared remarks, uh, I, I was reminded that this week is Boss's week. So that, 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 and- week, so that, that, and, in lieu of a gift, I just wanted to say some good things about my bosses, while I have, while I have the opportunity to do so. So I really, two things I just want to say is I really appreciated the board's engagement during our budget, our budget developments cycle. I think we all learned a little bit together. I think we were a cohesive group and a, and a, and a common voice. And I think while we all addressed, you know, kind of handle our passions in different ways, I think we, we, I think this board did a very good job of communicating with not only the community, but also our business and partners, and also our teachers' association. So I want to thank the board for, for, for the work that you've done also. While we didn't get the outcome that we had, had looked for, that doesn't diminish the work that was done, and the decision-making and developing a quality budget that we feel meets the needs of our employees, and our, and our facilities, and our instructional program in the city, and I think we've done good work in crafting and communicating what this school division needs to move forward. So I want to appreciate, I definitely appreciate your work there. I also would like to thank the board members for attending all of the many events and chicken dinners over the past few weeks, all the recognition dinners and, and awards programs and all of the other things. You know, there's, there's just something to say about your, your commitment and generosity of time, that, 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 that's very important, and it shows your values, and I think to a person on this board, I think we, we've really been present to support our employees, to support, to, to support our community. So thank you for that as well. And while my staff is not giving me my boss's day gift yet, I'm just going to throw that out there. I, I, I do appreciate, every, look around, okay, I just want to make sure I put that out there. I do want to say, I appreciate everything that you do to support our, the vision for the school division, and thank you so much. Now, just talking about some of those events coming up that we've, that we've partaken, partaken in. On Saturday, I attended the annual Hampton Roads two-hundred-plus men's breakfast, I think sev- many of us were there. This group of men performed great work in our community and served as mentors to young men across Hampton Roads. We had over ninety young men represented for, for having a three-point-oh GPA or higher in the school division, and I think that's phenomenal, that we have so many young men that who are performing very well academically in Newport News Public Schools. The Scholarship Breakfast is an annual signature event that recognizes meals from, throughout the region, and I can honestly say Newport News is well represented at that breakfast. So not only congratulations to our, to our, to the two-hundred-plus men for an excellent event, but also congratulations to our young men who were recognized at that event from all of our schools. So I'd also like to congratulate all of our Teachers of the Year. One of the dinners we had this, this, this past month was our Teacher of the Year banquet. We held an annual banquet on May second, and we announced our Division-wide Teacher of the Year. Congratulations to, to Mr. Andy Perry, who is our Division-wide and Middle School Teacher of the Year. Mr. Perry is a seventh-grade science teacher at Credenton Middle School. I had the fortune to, to visit his garden at, at Credenton Middle. He was out there working with his students on, on that day, and, and that garden, and it's coming along very well. Congratulations also to Carla Bradley, a Library and Media Specialist at Discovery STEM Academy, our Elementary School Teacher of the Year, and Kimberly Horton, an Algebra Teacher at Heritage High School, who was named the High School Teacher of the Year. We also recognized our support staff, that was another dinner, at a banquet last week. Congratulations and thank you to all of the support staff who ensure that smoo- the smooth operations of our school division. We thank you for all that you do every day for our students. And upcoming, on Thursday, May twenty-third, we are hosting the Annual Retirement Dinner, that will be coming up soon. I'm looking forward to celebrating with our honorees and recognizing all of their contributions to Newport News Public Schools. Upcoming as well, invite everyone to join us on Saturday, June first, from ten AM to two PM, for STEM, for our STEM Community Day at the Freeman Center at Christopher Newport University. That's an upcoming event, please mark that down, June first, on a Saturday, ten to two, at Christopher Newport University. And families can enjoy hands-on, hands-on engaging activities, robotics, STEM demonstrations, student displays, and competitions. And attendees can also explore STEM education opportunities and professions as well. The event is sponsored by the school district in cooperation with CNU. Bus transportation will be provided from locations throughout the city, and those locations are located on our website. I also want to take an opportunity to remind everyone that Monday, May twenty-seventh, is Memorial Day, and all schools and offices will be closed. And I'd also want to wish all of our graduating seniors best wishes. Graduation exercises will be held the second week of June. On Wednesday, Jan-, June fifth, at six PM, and Achievable Dream High School will conduct its commencement services at the Ferguson Center. On Saturday, why are you smiling over there, Maria? On Sa- on Saturday, she's smiling while I'm talking. On Saturday, June eighth, Warwick High School ceremonies will, will be held at ten, ten AM. Woodside's commencement will be held at two PM, followed by ceremonies for Denby High School at six-thirty at the Hampton Coliseum. Ceremonies for Heritage High School will be held on Saturday, June ninth, at two PM, followed by the commencement for Menchville High School at six PM at the Hampton Coliseum. So those, those conclude my remarks, Mr. Chairman. A lot of good things coming up, a lot of things, great things have passed. But our stu-, I wish our stu-, all of our students continue success as they take their SOLs. We're looking for great results, and our AP testers as well, best of luck to those students. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Dr. Parker. We'll move on to item number six, another time for the public to address the board. Are there any cards? There being none, we are moving on to matters by the board. Ms. Jones, before yours.
Evening, um, you know, June eighth, two PM, can't come soon enough, been looking forward to it since January. I would just like to start off my comments by highlighting the Kicking It to Violence Kickball Tournament that CWSCA held on Saturday. It was a success. I was very proud of seeing it come from the, its beginning phases, when we first started, I believe it was last year, to this year, not only having teams compete from the schools, but also having community teams compete as well. We had the police department, it was just, it was amazing, just seeing the community involvement pick up from where it was last year. And I'd like to thank all who came out and participated and played. I would also like to go back a little bit to one of the comments made by Mr. Levett about school-based voter registration drives. I know, because I have done a couple of them through other organizations, and then my government teacher actually puts one on every year, there are actually quite a few that happen within the schools. However, they're very largely promoted, and all the undertaking is done by individuals. I personally feel that it would be great if the school board, if Newport News Public Schools could maybe help, not necessarily the individuals, but the school district on a whole, and have some sort of central voter registration drive to take some of that pressure off of the students then trying to talk to administrators to get their collaborative organization to host one, or the teachers having to find extra time in their busy schedules to try to host them in their classes and, you know, cram lessons in. And I would also like to take my comments to a different tone than they normally do. I actually want to pull a quote from the April joint meeting that the board had with the city council. Now, the she's referred to Councilwoman Scott, and the he refers to Dr. Parker, and the quote is, "She, Councilwoman Scott, understood his, Dr. Parker's role, was to do what was best for the schools, and that the city council had to do what's best for the entire city." My question is, isn't what's best for the entire, for the schools what's best for the entire city? The schools have the population that the city, that makes up the city. You don't have a city without the schools. And I say that because while, you know, the matters of funding are done, everything is voted on, moving forward, you still have to look and consider that everything that happens in the schools is for the, the good of the city. You don't have the city if you don't have the schools. And so, as the board continues discussions with city council, and as city council and state legislators and federal legislators continue discussions about funding for education for various things, like, for example, the Title II funds decreased in funding this year. There's no reason funds should continue, continue decreasing if legislators on all levels claim that they're as passionate about education as, as they say they are. If that's true, then your funds will continue to increase. And as I've just been watching the debates go on, on all levels, it's just been something that kind of, it really stirs me, really stirs me. If you're going to put yourself in a position where you present people, then you need to make sure you're representing them accurately. So as years, as, as council and as the board moves on with upcoming years, just keep in mind that what you do for the school board is, what you do for the schools is what you're doing for the best of the city. There's no such thing as what's best for the school boards, for the schools is not what's best for the city. With that being said, I am very glad to see everything that Newport News Public Schools is doing to support its students and its teachers, and that'll be it for my comments for tonight, so, yeah.
I guess we'll see who's going to be on the school board years down the road.
My goal is the White House.
Okay, White House. Well, we're going to continue, I want to do something a little different, I'm going to start at a different end today. Ms. Simons.
All right. I'm also really looking forward to all of our graduations. My niece is graduating from Menchville High School, so I'm very excited about it. And I just continue to be so proud of our students. We had a really wonderful signing day for our New Horizons Academy of Advanced Technical Careers graduates. And what signing day involved is, we at New Horizons kind of helped these students apply for jobs at Newport News Shipbuilding and places like Pomaco Auto, and they got several job offers, and then on signing day, they got to pick which employer they were going to go work with. So it was really exciting, it was almost ninety students who went straight from high school, right into really, really well-paid careers with Newport News Shipbuilding and some of our advanced manufacturing employers and, and welding, and, and so it was, it was just a really great day. I would encourage any students who are interested in going right into a career to look at the Advanced Technical Careers Academy at New Horizons. And I also really enjoyed the Support Staff of the Year banquet. I was moved by so many of our support staff totally immersing themselves in the school and the mission of helping students. There was a security guard who was doing restorative justice circles with kids who were, you know, having trouble at school. There was a, a school administrator who was, started her own club, and was staying after school to, to mentor other young people at school. I just, I, I just, you know, teachers know that, that they're going to be mentoring kids, but, you know, everybody in the building really needs to work with students, and I was just so proud of our, of all of our administrators for just embracing that opportunity. And lastly, I would like to announce I'm going to have a town hall, a school board town hall tomorrow, Wednesday, from five-thirty to seven, at Denby Community Center, and I'm going to present some information that I received at the Virginia School Board Association Conference on School Safety. So I'm going to present some information on what we do in Virginia to keep our students safe at schools, and I'm also really pleased that the other Central District member, Lisa Searl-Slaw, is going to join me, and she'll also present on some issues that she's learned about during, during this last year. So, thank you very much, and I, I hope to see anyone interested at Denby Community Center tomorrow at five-thirty.
Thank you, Ms. Simons. And Mr. Ely.
Thank you. I also had the opportunity to attend the kickball game on Saturday at Todd Stadium. When I say that was, the energy out there was amazing, it was amazing, just to see the police department, the different schools, the children just competing against each other with all positive focus of, of curving balance, it was really, it was really good. I want to say congratulations to Denby High School and Heritage High School. I kept joking with the Denby High School teachers, saying, whoever win, you get the next day off, but the next day off was Sunday. So that was really, that was great, and big special thanks to our police department for partnering with us on such a great event. I also had the opportunity of being on the committee for Congressman Bobby Scott Congressional Art Contest. When I say the art from the students in our community that was produced, it was just phenomenal, and they said this is the most contestants they have seen since he's been doing it in twenty-five years. So it was definitely amazing to see students express their energy through art, and I'm a big advocate for art, and some children deal with so much nowadays, you have social media, you just, it's coming from so many, so many different angles, and I'm a big, um, big advocate for letting children express their arts. So they definitely did that. Ms. Lisa's daughter won her, she did a drawing, I thought it was from her college, too, it was just amazing, so our children are definitely doing very great jobs with the arts in the schools. Special thanks to all the teachers and staff. SOL testing, is it over?
Still over, it's still going.
It's still going, but I, I, I know y'all have definitely been working very hard to make sure our students are prepared to pass their SOLs, so special thanks to you. I also had the opportunity of visiting, I'm going to the Autoball this weekend at the Virginia Living Museum. They're definitely doing a great job over there. If you haven't had the chance to visit the new shark exhibit they have at their living museum, it is nice. I actually got to touch a shark, you know, I was kind of scared at first, but it didn't bite, it just, just laid there, so. The shark exhibit at the Virginia Living Museum is very something that you might want to take your family and, out and see, and I definitely love the partnership that the Virginia Living Museum and the school system does have. And the last thing, Huntington, we definitely want a Huntington Middle School, but to be quite honest, the ball is out of our hand. The funding for Huntington Middle School comes from the city. If we could build a Huntington Middle School tomorrow, I'm sure everybody on this board would pass, do the, hit it down, let's build a school. We don't have the funding, all we can do is continue to go to city council and beg them, sir, please, sir, can we have the money to build a school in our community? And I appreciate the Huntington alumni for all that you are doing to make sure this happened, because we can't do it alone. We can't do it alone as school programs, it's going to take community efforts to make sure we get the school built. I mean, we tried with the budget. All we could do is continue to try, continue to fight, but it's definitely going to be a, it's going to have to be something that the city want to do, and invest in our community. We, we just got a thirty million cent, what is the, the HUD grant? There's great things happening in the East End. We definitely need a school, and we definitely need to support other community to continue to push city council, to let them know, we're stakeholders in the city, we want a school, you're going to build our school. It's not up to you, it's not about what you want, it's about what the citizens want. And I'll be honest with you, when it, when it was brought to me, when I first got on the board, I said, okay, I don't know if we should build it or not, but it wasn't about what John wants. John, this, being elected is about working for the people, and I think if our city council members, not all of them, if some of would know that you represent the community and not represent yourself, we can get further in a lot of things with the city, and especially Huntington Middle School. So I definitely appreciate all you do, and hopefully y'all will continue to fight, and I know I will continue to fight, and I can speak for the rest of our board members, they will continue to fight to make sure we have a school built, a Huntington Middle School, and not just say you're going to build it, give us a date when you're going to build it. You can say you could build it, but that could be twenty-thirty, twenty-forty. We need to, we need to know now, when do you plan on building Huntington Middle School? So I want to again, thank you for all y'all do, and we're going to continue to fight for you and the community.
Thank you, Mr. Ely. It's Searl-Slaw.
This time of the year is really a lot of energy. There's a lot of energy doing things for the school, to wrap up exams, students finishing final projects, and our heroes really are our teachers. So thank you, continue to hang in there, reach out to those students, to push them that extra mile. I know that they lose steam at the end, just like we do, and we have to model for them what that looks like to keep going, so I, I charge you to, to do that and to do that well. I got the opportunity to go to Heritage's STEAM, or STEM Day, the students got to present their projects. It was just exciting to see what influences them and where they're headed, and how much they, we think they aren't listening, but they really are, and how much they realize that what's been put in front of them has been for their benefit. And just to see those presentations of how they've pulled it all together here at the end is really exciting. I guess the only other thing to comment for me is on the budget process. This is my I guess the only other thing to comment for me is on the budget process. Uh, this is my first year on the board. I, I would say that it was an eye-opener, um, but the cohesiveness that this board, um, spoke with was, uh, just remarkable. Um, we're elected officials just as, um, the city council is, so we're, we have a charge to do and, uh, just as they do. And so we are not downtrodden. We're going to figure this out. We're going to meet with them. We're going to do what it takes so that we don't have a repeat of this time next year. Um, I am so honored to work with this group. They are a passionate group, and they believe in what we have been elected to do.
Thank you, Ms. Searls-Lawes. And Mr. Harris.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first, I would like to, uh, thank you, um, my fellow school board members, uh, Dr. Parker, his staff, uh, teachers, and every, and other stakeholders in the community that came out to support the, uh, budget. I can honestly say I'm a little bit, I am disappointed, uh, not in our efforts, um, but, uh, in the city's effort. I think the young lady here pretty much summed it up best. Um, I'm still confused about it. They say if you're trying to make sense of something that probably has no sense to be made of, then you have to move on, accept it, or whatever the case may be. Uh, but this charge is not to them. They've made their decision. Uh, this charge is to, uh, the people that sit to my left and the people that sit to my right. Uh, I have no doubt that we are a cohesive team, uh, but I also know that our message and the delivery of that message has to match the, um, outcome of this last decision. Uh, we cannot approach this thing the same way we have approached it. Uh, I use the analogy of, I feel as though I'm oh and two, and I, you know, I have one more, one more swing at this thing. Uh, the bottom line is, we as a board, like I said a couple of months ago, uh, have to get honest with ourselves. We have to sit down and discuss on what type of voice we want to bring forward. Uh, also, all options, uh, should be brought to us on the table, uh, and, and even in the code of Virginia clearly states, if I'm not mistaken, uh, Title twenty-two dash one Education, Chapter eight, Public Schools, Article four, Town Schools and Divisions, that the bottom line is, is that pro-rate share of town share be determined by allocating the town to the same percentage of general or unit levy receipts appropriated by the county government. Uh, basically, uh, pretty much share funding, uh, what you talked about, Dr. Parker. So, you know, we have the, uh, the, the, the state constitution, we have the, uh, state articles on our side. So it is up to us as a board on how we want to send that message to them. And sometimes you have to draw a line in the sand. I mean, they have already shown us, uh, the support they have for the school division. Uh, so I, I just don't wanna continue down the same conversation of, uh, yeah, we can meet, we can meet, sure, we can do that. But at the same time, I wanna know what we are prepared to do as a board if we hit, uh, crossroads X and it doesn't happen, alright? I'm willing to live with any decision that we make. I'm willing to support the board in any way, uh, I can, uh, but, um, uh, I didn't like, I don't like the outcome of that, and, uh, personally, I don't, I don't see it, uh, changing. And so if they don't change, then we are gonna have to change. Uh, so. And I, I thank everybody again for supporting this, uh, board, uh, supporting the decisions that was made. Uh, I would like to see more parents participate, uh, in driving this home. Uh, maybe there's, maybe some groups and organizations out there that can, uh, help us, uh, actually, uh, drill down to those, those parents and, and educate them and, and let them know that, you know, you know, we need their voice as well. And I think once that happens, I think people tend to change their mind once they, once they see their local support, uh, move in another direction. Alright? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Harris. Uh, Dr. Best.
Um, good evening, everyone. As I was trying to characterize, um, my remarks since the last school board meeting, the word celebrations came to mind. But, um, I kinda changed that to the beginning of celebration. Uh, I too have had an opportunity to attend several, um, affairs where we celebrated Teacher of the Year, Support Staff of the Year. I've attended, uh, Programs for Students, Salute to Success, I Too Can Dream, HR CAP honored a couple of our students. Um, the New Horizons Signing Day was simply, um, amazing, and the two hundred men, um, scholars program. So we're beginning to celebrate as we get to the end of the school year. As far as Huntington Middle School, Huntington Middle School is concerned, it's tied in with the budget, which several of you have commented on tonight. And at this point, um, as Mr. Ely has said, our hands are kind of tied. When I was a student, government was one of my favorite, um, subjects. I, I didn't envision myself sitting on the school board, but, but here I am. I was a student when, um, Huntington was, Huntington High School was closed, um, and now I'm a board member with some, some voice in the fate of Huntington Middle School being rebuilt in the community. And in my wildest dreams that, that I ever fancied that we would be waiting on information from a city attorney. We have to really go into what the law says as far as funding, um, schools. I, I just never imagined we would be, um, at this point. But with that being said, I commit myself one hundred percent. Um, I will give everything in my powers and my efforts and in, in my ability, um, to push forward for a new, um, Huntington. And I'm gonna close and say that this is the happiest time of the school year, um, as, because we're getting to the end of the school year for many, for students, for staff, for parents. But also, it's one of the hardest times, um, of the school year. It's very difficult when kids come back after the Memorial Day holiday. It's very difficult. Teachers, they have pretty much given all that they have, and they're running on steam. Uh, parents are getting a little antsy because they don't know. Some of them still don't have plans, um, for the summer, but at the heart of it all is our students. And for some of our students, even though I commend Newport News Public Schools and I'm proud to be a part of it, because we have programs such as Spark and the STEPS program, but for some of our students, it's a hard time because it's a scary time, because school is the, the one constant for them. That's the thing that's always gonna be there. They have teachers that love them. They have meals. They have certain times that they do things. But as we get to the end of the school year, for, for some of our students, it's very, very difficult. Um, I know I'm kinda preaching to the choir in this room, but for those of you out there on, on television, you know, keep that in mind when we think about our students, um, you know, for the summer as they take this break. And just embrace them and support the things that the school division and that the city and that parents and communities are trying to do so that students can have a safe, they can have a pleasant, and, and they can have a successful in a, uh, summer. So that's all I'd like to say.
Thank you, Dr. Best. Vice Chair Brown.
Alright. Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman and, uh, members of the board. I wanna thank the board, uh, first and foremost, uh, this evening, uh, for your offer of support, uh, as I pursue the office of, uh, Regional Chairman. And I, I pledge to, uh, try to represent our division and our region, uh, in the best way, uh, possible. Uh, there will be elections, so y'all need to show up to the VSBA Annual Conference and, and vote for me. Uh, with that, uh, this is, you know, as was mentioned, this is one of the happiest times of the year. Uh, one of the times of the year I look forward to the most. I, I love graduation weekend. Uh, this is the weekend that reminds me of, as a board member, why we do what we do. When you get a chance, uh, those of you, members of the public, uh, it's, it's an honor and privilege to be able to sit there on stage. And, um, you see the Hampton Roads Convention Center filled to capacity. And for people who wanna say that, um, the, the, the public or people don't value or care about education, just come to one of our graduations and listen to the people screaming and, and cheering their, their heads off, um, like they just won the lottery, because they did. That's what education does for people. And you will know how much people do value education. So don't, don't believe, you know, what you hear, uh, from other folks when they, when they talk about people don't value education. Because when you see those, um, young people walk across the stage and receive their diploma, you know how much people value education, 'cause you'll hear it, uh, if you come to any of our graduations. With that being said, I wanted to make a couple of comments about the budget, um, uh, say some, something, reiterate some things that have, that have been said. Uh, but I, I, as always, I, I throw my numbers in there. There's a couple of numbers that I hope the public will continue to pay attention to. So I've been calling this out, uh, at every, uh, board meeting for the last few months, and I'm still gonna put out the rhetorical question of, two point eight million dollars was approved in the capital budget for a design of Huntington Middle School. Has two point eight million dollars been appropriated to the Newport News Public School Division for the design of Huntington Middle School? Even though it was voted on and approved by city council, have we received it yet? And I believe the answer to that question is still no, almost more than a year ago. Okay, so tonight, we voted as we, I believe we did not have any other recourse, because we went and asked for an additional two point four million dollars in our operating budget, but that, that, uh, that offer was denied. And instead, it was another, we promise we'll give you two point four million dollars in capital, which is, you know, that's, that's nice, 'cause our, our buildings and our capital is in, in great need. But we were talking about the operating budget. So we were talking about the operating budget. We asked for two point four million dollars in the operating budget. And what we, what was turned around, no, you can have two point four million dollars in capital. By the way, there was two point eight million dollars we still haven't given you. So now, if you add those up, I, you know, I do math, five point, that's five point two million dollars. So I hope the public is paying attention to five point two million dollars. Let's see if we get it. 'Cause two point eight million dollars of it, we still don't have it. Now, we get to the capital side, 'cause that's what we're getting ready to do in the fall. We're gonna have to, there's, there's two budget cycles. I want everyone to hopefully pay attention to that, understand that. So we are, just got through talking about our operating budget. And now we're gonna have to get ready to talk about our capital budget, and that's where Huntington Middle School and a lot of the other school, uh, schools in our division who are in desperate need of funding, uh, where we're gonna need that funding. Well, our percentage of the budget is even lower on the capital side than it is on the operating budget side. Meaning the share of, of revenue, the share of funding that the city spends, the percentage is even lower on the capital side. But I'm not, maybe it's, maybe it's not lower this year, 'cause this year is, I've got down the lowest I've ever seen it, we're at twenty-two percent by my count. If you count the, uh, uh, general fund plus waterworks revenue, we're down at twenty-two percent. So maybe, maybe it's a little bit higher. Maybe it's about the same. But it's worse on the capital side, okay? So in either way, we have to start talking about the conversation the community, the public needs to start thinking about, we need to be a larger share. We need to be an equal partner or a larger share of the budget either way. We have more employees than the city does. But the majority of the money the city spends on itself. We have more land than the city does. About seventy percent of all the land in the city, all the municipal land in the city belongs to the school division. We get less than a third of the revenue to maintain seventy percent of all the square footage and buildings in the city. We have, you know, roughly on the other side with the operating side, seventy percent, something like that of the employees in the city are with the school division, less than a third of the budget. So those, those two equations, they don't balance out. Eventually, something's gotta give, and that's where we, we are. I hope the public understands that it is a, is a crisis in terms of you cannot continue in that manner. And what is best for the schools, I will say, I agree, what's best for the schools is what's best for the city. There is a return on investment. Dr. Parker mentioned it when he had his, uh, his State of the Schools, uh, address. There are several studies that do, um, show it's about anywhere from a dollar thirty to a dollar fifty for every dollar spent on schools. So you spend a dollar, you put, you put a dollar into schools, a dollar thirty, dollar fifty, come, a hundred fifty percent return comes back into the local economy and boosts our entire economy. Helps all of us, helps, uh, all our salaries, helps all of, of us in this community to live and work in a better place, okay? I'm not sure you get that kind of return on investment for parking garages. You know, uh, so that's just, I, I hope that, uh, everyone in the, in the community continues to pay attention to this and, and monitor this. 'Cause we're getting ready. We gotta go to the capital side, which is even harder. So in the capital side, maybe what's gonna happen is, we won't get any increased funding in the capital, but we'll get a promise for some more funding in the operating budget. Maybe we'll get the, maybe we'll get the two point four million dollars in the operating budget when we get to the capital budget. But in all seriousness, we, we do, it, we do need to, uh, turn this around. We do need to get that larger share, because we do have some schools I mentioned tonight, Aviation Academy. You know, we've talked about Warwick High School. We've talked about Stechfield. We, we got a lot of schools that are in the same, it's approaching the same decision point, that same tipping point that Huntington was in. Where it's, mm, can't keep going like this. And the way that the, the law works right now, the only place, so, so, so everybody hears it. The only place that we can get funding for construction of our schools is really the city. That's it. Grants and things like that, you can get a little, you can get a little bit here and there, but the only real place that we can get funding for our schools is from the city. It has to come from the locality. That's the way that the laws and everything has been set up by the General Assembly and everybody else. That's how it's, that's how it goes. So the funding has to come locally. It's not gonna come from anywhere else. So when, as you talk to other folks and you talk to your representative, that's where it's gonna come from. So don't accept any other answer when they say, well, what, what about this or what about this other plan? No, it's gonna come from the locality. Comes from the city. That's it. There, there is no ifs, ands, or buts about it. So I just want everyone, hopefully, to be very clear about that. And, you know, you, uh, go ahead, I threw out numbers. Go ahead and, you know, hit me back. Tell me, tell me if I'm wrong or whatever. I'll, I'll be happy to come back up here and, and tell you if I made even, any mistakes in my numbers. Go ahead and challenge me. But I'm, I'm, I think I'm pretty clear here on the money has to come from the city. We're not getting enough of it. We need to get to a revenue sharing model. That's the solution here. Other localities have done it very successfully. Virginia Beach, Norfolk, even Hampton has, uh, a revenue sharing model. We can do revenue sharing. And it's, it works, it works great. Works great for lots of localities. And I'm gonna throw out a number, thirty-three. I think we need to be thirty-three percent, third of the budget, consistently every year, thirty-three percent of the revenue. Coming into the city ought to come to us. I think that's, I think that's, uh, I think that's less than fair, 'cause really, I think it'll be half. So I, so I started out my, my, my position on the compromise of thirty-three percent, okay? And that's my number, Mr. Chairman, and I'll yield the floor to you.
I forgot something very important. I too, I'm, I'm a proud parent. I have a student that's graduating, um, from Achievable Dream on June the fifth, so. And she also has perfect attendance for twelve years, but I'm very, very proud of her, very proud that she's a product of such a fantastic, um, public school system.
Well, well, I guess it's me and to your bed, um, there's, there's, there's great things that are happening in Newport News, uh, Public Schools. I, I'm gonna start this evening by saying, uh, I have two daughters who graduated on Mother's Day weekend, uh, from two, uh, different universities. And, and they were, again, educated here at, at the, at Newport News Public Schools. So we are, uh, doing great things with our students. And congratulations to Dr. Best, to your daughter, on her graduation in the coming month. I wanna start by saying first, uh, congratulations to a couple of groups. The students who were recognized at the Salute to Success banquet, um, congratulations to them. Not only were those students recognized for academic achievement, uh, for books and things, but many of those were recognized for accomplishment in obtaining multiple certifications in, uh, particular disciplines, uh, plumbing, H-FAC, software applications. Uh, some of these students are equipped to graduate from school and then go directly into a good-paying job. So this is an outstanding accomplishment, and to continue on the good news what Ms. Simon was saying, uh, many of those students were awarded jobs, or they were offered acceptance into apprenticeships or into, um, different trades programs here, uh, in Newport News and its surrounding, uh, cities. So congratulations to those students. Uh, to our Teachers of the Year awardees and to our Support Staff Year Honorees, congratulations on a job well done. You earned it, so you deserve it. And congratulations is good to, it's a lot of chicken dinners, uh, but, um, it, we care about all folks here in Newport News, not just the teachers, but the support staff, some of the folks who never get, um, noticed. We also had a, a dinner for those who are twenty-five, thirty, forty years of service here. And again, on Thursday, we'll be back eating dinner again, uh, for those who are retiring. So, uh, congratulations to those folks, uh, who will be retiring, um, coming into the school year. To a few other individuals and organizations, I wanted to say, uh, who came to bat for Newport News Public Schools in the support of, uh, the school budget, uh, that was proposed to the city council. I wanna thank you for your belief and your commitment to our students and to our teachers and to our staff personnels, in, in particular to, uh, public education. Uh, your passion was heartfelt. Uh, it was not anger at the city council, it was just passion, as one had stated. A special thanks, uh, to Newport News Teachers Association, the Newport News PTA, the Newport News Education Foundation, the NDLA CP, and to Delegate David Yancy for writing letters to our city council in support of that budget that was presented to them. And so that's all types of folks. We would like to say thank you, thank you, and thank you again. Uh, at this time, I do would like to thank the city council for approving. Uh, at this time, I do would like to thank the city council for approving the required funds to meet the needs of the school system for this coming year, so, no consolation, we did get a budget funded, it's a short-term fix, just a short-term fix, and, um, we need to, uh, look for a long-term solution in order to address the funding needs of our school system, operating and to CIP. I know this board and Dr. Parker and this staff, I know we're eager to start the meetings with the city council, you know, uh, we're gonna come to that meeting with open ears, with open ideas, with open discussion. There must be honest dialogue between the two groups. We must begin to work together and respect one another for the betterment of our children and the citizens here in Newport News. I would say congratulations again to the city of Newport News and the Newport News Redevelopment Housing Authority for being selected as the winner of the Choice Neighborhood Initiative Grant, where they were awarded thirty million dollars for their Ridley-Marshall project. I hope that these funds will help to lessen the financial burden on the city and that they could find it more favorable to build that new educational facility, the Huntington STEAM Academy, the Huntington, uh, VOTEC School, the Huntington Middle School in the South District for our students. So part of that money, uh, was for the school system, uh, thanks to Dr. Parker and his team, uh, though not mentioned in the paper, the school system played a, we put, we played a large percentage of getting that grant as well. Uh, we had to get the numbers, we had to identify all the kids in that one-mile radius grid made it, rate, and then during that talk with this, during the CNI presentation, the question came up about Huntington. The CNI, they asked, where's the money for Huntington? And Dr. Parker, uh, kindly turned it over to a city manager, and the city manager assured HUD, well, we got that thirty million dollars, that the funds were approved for the study and that we were working on an agreement to build that school. So I hope that in, of course, that thirty million dollars does come with strings attached, and I hope, uh, that they're listening to, um, this board tonight, and I hope that they've listened to some of the city council meetings, that, that Huntington is not left out in that equation of, 'cause all of this money, thirty million dollars, really, many of us, that's past our times. That thirty million dollars, the seat of fruition of that, it's about ten years away to really see that project, you know, five, ten years away till you really see it. That's for, those kids right now are in middle school. That's who the CNI is for, the betterment of this city, the economic prowess, the economic fortitude vision is for the students that are currently really in elementary school, really in elementary school. So when we think about that thirty million dollars and think about economics, I heard that today, there's a movie I watched called, I think, The Darkest Minds, where they rounded up all the kids that were smart, and they had this intelligence, some can move stuff, some could spit fire, some could read their minds. Well, when they rounded up all the kids in the city, guess what? Everyone moved out of that city because there was no jobs, no economy. No children, no economy. No children, no economy. So the economy really starts, again, that's an investment, I'll say it again, no need to stand before a pain teller, when no deposits have been made, children and education is an investment. You must invest in our kids, and that's all we're talking about, we're in, I'm not shaming, don't wanna shame any city council folk or things like, we're just passionate. We're just passionate about, you know, our, our students in our city. If you're passionate about the city and education, then you're passionate about our city. So again, uh, last but not least, I wanna cra, congratulate the seniors, again, who will be graduating, uh, in, in two weeks, and, uh, I look forward to seeing them at the graduations. And that being said, um, there's no other comments, I will adjourn this meeting.